Yeah, we can do that too. Still do.
Well, you have now been sent.
Yeah. Still do.
You have your new phone.
There you go.
Do you want to go back to that? That was a little bit of a hand on me from you. Much of the time. I can't tell you apart anyway.
I didn't have little so much as one race.
Uh, yeah. She's not wearing a mask.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
How about my? It's like a super sound. She loves you right there. Yeah. She likes it. And here that is. That's me. She loves me. I'll have to.
Running time anywhere.
Well, thank you all for today. Amazing. Amazing.
I will. That's really nice to hear. Oh, where the world. Oh. Really. Sure.
Oh, you say.
Oh. So. The president. Get more ready.
Okay.
Okay. So. Two. There wasn't much. Uh. I guess. Let's get out. It's a lot like the. Life. Can't live. Where they.
It was a serum and I think. Like. Serum. Yeah. So she's officially. Okay. Yeah. She might have been there. Yeah. She just was in place.
Well, yeah. An appearance.
Now. Stop. Yeah. See, I don't like. That's great. But this whole. Can't. She don't love. And. She. Yeah. She goes. She. Yeah. All right. Yes. Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm just. I want to make. Okay. I'll. I'll pay back to you next time. Look at.
We're a better little place. Oh, yeah. You. 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 You got. You got. But.
Okay. I'll. Next to you. Next. Look at.
Oh, yeah. Good.
You're a good. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
You can't. That's.
Okay. Okay. That's. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I can see the. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. What? Are you? I'm.
I don't know. It's probably. Yeah.
Yeah. Williams.
What? Yeah. Yeah, ours is. But now we're.
She said. She's just trying. Proud of it. I think this.
She don't agree.
I know. Exactly.
Is that on the ground? It's all. Chair. Thank you, man. I was just. How you doing?
Yes.
Nice. Kind of happy. If you want to talk about. The other projects. I've got a good.
I did. I didn't.
He was saying. Very. Yes, sir. Mark. I don't think they. I think you said. I was. Sorry. I was. Sorry. I don't think they. I don't think they. I think you said. Let me show. They should. I'm sorry, Mark. Good for you.
So. There's. So. I just. My future. That's.
Go.
I'm. I'm. I'm.
I wonder. If. That's. I'm. Are you? We all have the same. What? Doing. She may not have.
Yeah. I wonder if this happened before.
Did you? Yeah. See. I'm.
Congrats. For.
Good.
Did it. Did that. So. Yeah.
I am. Sure. I'm. I'm. You know. We'll. Do that. That's. I don't.
Thank you. How much? You had that.
Yeah. Hey, John. I was. I was.
That's. Right. I think. I think. I think.
Okay. I'm. 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 Here. That's. Been. Okay. It's. Been. Yeah. Okay. It's got. The. That's been. Yeah. The. This. Got.
We'll go ahead and call the August meeting of the John City Board of Education order. Thank you, Rodney, for coming out. Um, we normally start our meetings with a moment of silence. Today, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. So if y'all will join us for a moment of silence, uh, we'll move on with the rest of our team. Thank you. Mr. Williams is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can say.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. The intended republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, I do want to announce that, uh, board member, um, Michelle Trees is with us via video. She has a personal emergency in pursuit of Tennessee law and, uh, board policy. She's able to participate in our meeting electronically. So she'll be doing that tonight. Um. We need to adopt an agenda. Clear motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is Correspondents' Delegations and Communications. So this is the point in time when we have, uh, folks here who want to address us. We have three people who've signed up tonight to address us. Uh, the first of those is Danielle Goodrich.
Ooh.
Ms. Goodrich, if you're here, if you'll come to the podium, please, uh, give us your name and your address. You have five minutes. And, uh, the board typically does not respond to comments from you.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Goodrich and my address is 304 St. Eagle Drive. Um, like I said, my name is Danielle Goodrich and I'm a parent of three children in the district. Firstly, I don't envy your position, but I do question your recommendations. First off, I feel bad for the teachers. They are not equipped to teach children my kids ages three, five, seven virtually. That's unrealistic. My five-year-old said today, I hate this. I just want to go back to school. Then later at recess, she said, oh, recess is supposed to be with my friends. I'm deeply concerned that the guidelines from the Tennessee Department of Health and Tennessee Department of Education run schools. Do not take into account the impact both short and long term on children's health and well-being. Especially since the guidance go against the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the C E C, local pediatrician groups, the governor, even the president. Can you explain why are you going against their advice? We too believe children should be back in school. The teachers want to be back. The kids want to be back. We believe distance learning is not effective and causes harm. And after seeing it firsthand today, I know it. We believe physical distancing on campus is impractical and damaging. Why are we teaching our children to fear each other? We believe prolonged mask-wearing by healthy children is unnecessary, imposes additional threats. Have you seen what a mask worn by a five or seven-year-old looks like after an hour? Go wash your hands and put on your dirty mask. And the kid from school had their mask on the whole time today. We are demanding you provide proof your recommendations are more harmful than a virus not harming ninety-nine percent of the population, especially children. If our unelected health department is going against the guidance of most experts, I'll be certain their recommendations are in the best interest of our children. And if not, why are you allowing them? According to current data from the best studies countries and regions, including the C E C, the overall lethality of COVID is now estimated at a point zero seven to point two six percent. And overall death rates are dropping significantly. COVID nineteen is far less deadly than originally predicted. With a risk of death for adults roughly equivalent to the risk of dying from driving in a car and we don't close highways. The death rate in children who experience the infection is virtually zero. For ages ten to nineteen, it is point two. And there have been very few fatalities for children under the age of ten. The death of even one child is tragic, of course. However, it must be kept in mind that according to CDC estimates, as many as six hundred children in the U S die from the flu. A just-released GMA pediatric study flatly states, our data indicate that children are far greater less risk of critical illness from the flu than from COVID. The WHO's chief scientist states that children seem less capable of spreading coronavirus and are at very low risk of illness. The same scientists report that no major outbreaks have resulted from schools reopening. As stated in the ad, the archives of disease in children, children are not COVID nineteen super spreaders, intend to go back to school. And there's no evidence of children infecting teachers. Meanwhile, we have more student suicides and drug overdoses than COVID deaths. With a viral video from a student called Nan showing us why isolation is harmful. The better policy is at-risk students, teach at-risk students, teach at-risk teachers, teach at-risk students virtually. Will the rest of us get back to it? Our children are being used to form an agenda. You're allowing it by not saying, thanks for your advice, but we disagree. You don't want their responsibilities to step aside or have parents sign waivers. We have real-world scenarios to support opening schools. Look at your akin countries that have already reopened without significant spread. The media initially pointed to antibodies being fleeting in COVID infections and therefore hurting the immune is unlikely. However, they have found sense, but there's another factor in recurring last year, T cells. And these T cells are lasting, showing why countries like Sweden are out of it. While countries and states like us that did distancing are bouncing back up, showing that you can't shut down viruses of this nature, but you must let it spread amongst the ninety-nine percent that are healthy and experiences mildness with return mean cycles of resistance, just like SARS did. We even have our own educator open all throughout with no spread. And now it appears you can pay for educator and have your child in the classroom, but if you don't pay, I'm the teacher. And teachers' kids can learn in the classroom, who basically set up a caste system for our kids, just like adults. Essential, non-essential. What a load of garbage that is. Pay to play. Why don't I just send my child to private school? Because those two are open here. Why are we not doing the same? This new norm is more dangerous for our children. These real-life scenarios point to the recommendations for virtual learning, distance masking, isolation for the vast majority to be ill-advised and unsupported in the scientific literature. Additionally, we believe basing school opening and closing policy thresholds only on cases is illogical. Declining fatality must be a consideration. We believe your recommendations, the recommendations of the health department, to be equally advised and not supported by the scientific literature or real-world scenarios. We look to other regulating industries that see huge flaws. A FOIA showed the C E C and F D A to be half-bought by the agencies that are supposed to govern. We have the DEA looking the other way in the opioid crisis. We have the EPA still sending life C D C. We have a problem in America where our government has become more of an extension corporation with representatives of interested people. We even have local health departments advising policies that are the antithesis of health. Santa Cruz are using disinfectant mist circulated by fans. Children will certainly have respiratory distress from aerosol disinfectant. We have voucher now recommending goggles. Should we do that? We have pharmacies blocking prescriptions written by doctors. We have a lot of institutions like schools and government playing doctor while not listening to the advice of them. And please, if you're getting the advice from ballot, a local healthcare monopoly that answers more to shareholders than patients, then we're definitely not getting the advice. We've had a lot of bad policy. And if at this point we must question it with a fine-tooth comb and be sure that is actually in the best interest of our children. Isolation over sanitation is the opposite of what we.
Ms. Goodrich, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Um, the last thing I just wanted to say was, we want evidence. I sent you a sixteen-page document asking for it. And if you cannot provide it, you have no right, no basis, and no grounds for such recommendations. If you have no evidence that the experimental measures and your guidelines would do no harm to the physical, emotional, and psychological development of our children, then please alert me of them. Get our kids back in school before.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next person that's signed up to address us is Shannon Castillo. Ms. Castillo, if you'll please come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Shannon Castillo. I live at two oh four West Holston Avenue. Um, my name should be familiar to most of you, um, because I emailed a lot of you this morning. Uh, I'd like to thank those school board members that, um, responded to me. I appreciate your listening ear. Um, I would like to publicly thank Dr. Barnett and Dr. Timms for having a conference call with me today in the midst of, um, the struggles that my kids had. Um, those that, one of them's at Liberty Bell, one of them's at Science Hill, um, the absolute struggle they had signing on Canvas, um, the disaster that was Chromebooks. Um, it was really, really rough. Um, today I would like to speak for the silent majority. I'd like to speak for the seventy percent of parents who quietly chose for their kids to go to school. I'd like to speak for the seventy percent of students who want to be in school. I want to speak for the seventy percent of kids who learn better in school and who need the support that they might not get at home. You all have listened to the vocal minority. The thirty percent of parents who wanted their kids to learn remotely. The thirty percent of students with the means and the privilege to stay home to learn remotely. And you know what? You accom- you accommodated their request as you should have. You should have allowed them the choice to learn remotely. And you should be commended for making that hard choice. It is time for you to accommodate the other seventy percent. I am here tonight not to talk about the various problems that was today, because there's a lot, but I want to bring solutions. And here is a list of solutions that can be made tonight. One, I am begging you guys to figure out a way to bring our kids back to school. Stagger them if necessary. Elizabeth and City Schools is using that approach. That is a safe way to bring our kids back. Secondly, consider a staggered login. It's obvious that our system cannot handle eight thousand students logging in at the same time. Third, and you all should be writing this down, by the way. Um, pick a platform. Some of our teachers are using Google Meetings and some of them are using Zoom. Our kids are confused. They're flipping back and forth with different, um, platforms. It's not a plan. Next, you should consider separating the platforms. Perhaps elementary should be signing in using Study Island and maybe Science Hill be using Canvas again. Maybe allowing the systems not so much pressure to be logged on at the same time. Um, we should have a list of supportive devices if the Chromebook doesn't work. Now, not every parent has the ability to have an extra laptop laying around. We did today and we needed it. My sixteen-year-old said, but what about the kids that didn't have that opportunity? What did they do today? I didn't have an answer for her. I T, though they are great, I'd like also to thank, publicly thank Bob at I T. I didn't catch his last name, who's great. But one suggestion to be made today is to connect that I T to social media. Um, we could be, those I T folks could be responding to questions online through Twitter, Facebook, um, or even Instagram with some live, rather than having to call in and join it here before they can be answered. And last, I think you should consider some kind of asynchronous schedule. If we're going to continue to do this, rather than have everybody on that, uh, try to force a normal school schedule into a remote school schedule, consider making it asynchronous, where they can log in whenever they need to. Um, be able to get those, those classroom hours done, um, at a little bit easier times. I know tonight, you're not here to listen to anything that I just said. Tonight is supposed to be deciding about fall sports. And I hope that you have the courage to do what our governor is recommending, for our students to be in school and to go back to sports. I don't envy your position. I'm thankful that you all are, care about our kids as much as I care about my own kids. I want to be an advocate for the kids that don't have a voice. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Final person that's signed up to address us is Addison Stables. Ms. Stables, if you'll come up and give us your name and, uh, address, please.
Addison Stables, three oh three Gorneck Stride. Good evening, commissioners, staff, and parents. My name is Addison Stables and I have been a Liberty Bell student athlete since twenty eighteen. As a proud student athlete, I'm compelled to speak on school sports being delayed or canceled due to the pandemic. canceled due to the pandemic. I recognize and respect the difficult and challenging position you all are in, in order to protect the health and safety of everyone. However, risk is a part of everyday life, and with the pandemic safeguards that have been introduced and followed, I believe we can begin our sports season safely. The absence of normalcy has taken a toll on me and many other student athletes' mental and physical well-being. As I stand before you, I make a sincere promise that I will abide by the recommended safety precautions and be a model for safe and responsible behavior. If you allow sports to return, I believe every student athlete will make that same comment. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you. Now, no one else has, uh, signed up to address this this evening. There's anyone else here who is interested in addressing us at this time?
Shannon, can I read my letter that I sent to you?
Sure.
I had to put it all through the next.
Come on up and give us your.
Can A.J. Mailer report walk in? I feel like I need to do this.
Give us your name and address, please.
Melissa Stegall Jones, one fifty Durham Road. Some of this may seem, I want to read it as I wrote it. I wrote it on Friday. It says, "First of all, I want to thank you for your service to our school system. You have had some incredibly difficult decisions to make that affects our entire community. The burn is great, and I do not envy your position. Never could we have imagined at this time last year that we would be facing such a crisis. I have been vocal to some of you when asked about the closure of schools and my regard, my concern regarding the lack of instruction my son and so many others received during the last nine weeks of last school year. However, just as I expected would happen, the Johnson City school system has accepted the challenge and knocked it out of the park. I am confident you are ready." Now, we had a little disaster today, but I'm sure you'll get there. But would I have preferred in-person learning for my son? Absolutely. But we are staying positive and we will persevere through a remote environment to start this school year. The administration, teachers, and coaches have designed plans and worked tirelessly for the students they love during the summer. I am so proud to tell my friends from different states and cities that our school system has allowed parents a choice for remote or in-person learning. I put emphasis on choice. They are amazed that East Tennessee can make that happen. Let's have faith in our administration, teachers, coaches, and most importantly, these kids that are out there, these students, that they can execute the plans as laid out by the governor and his team and the T double S double A. I watched the governor's news conference yesterday. Dr. Lisa Piercy, I now answer a question regarding fall sports. To paraphrase, she said, "Sports are crucial for the mental and physical health of students. A student athlete does not have to play sports, but they should be given the choice." And I envy such a choice. I couldn't agree more with her. I know that is the case for my son. Johnson City, Tennessee, and the Appalachian Highlands is a national model for how things can be done. The Bristol Motor Speedway was featured on national news outlets as to how to have large sporting events safely. Why can't we do that for high school sports? If anyone can do this, it's us and our neighbors. Faith over fear. My son is a football player. Football parents have to place absolute trust in Coach Carter and his staff to keep our children as safe as possible every time they put that helmet on. I pause when I read and sign the concussion waiver, but Evan loves the game, his teammates, and coaches. I sign it because I think it's the best for my son's physical, mental, and social development. I trust no man more than Stacy Carter and Keith Turner to take care of Evan and each and every Science Hill high school athlete. I also get incredibly anxious every time there's a school shooting and I send Evan back to school, but I trust that you, C, and Mr. Todd Barnett will mitigate that risk to the best of your abilities. I do that for the same reason. I believe in-person public education is the best choice for my son's physical, mental, social, and educational development. Life is not risk-free. I am running to ask you to, to preserve each parent's freedom to make choices regarding the athletic participation of their children in fall sports. This has been a year of loss for families throughout the city, state, country, and world. In many ways, normal life has been paused. Though certainly not of utmost importance, sports is still a central part of the lives of many families. Clearly, I have a son that will be impacted by your decision regarding fall sports. He has already lost one year of track and field competition. He has been a trooper. As much as normal life has been lost due to COVID nineteen restrictions, cancellations, and postponements, he even had to endure weeks of waiting to become a licensed driver, but to lose his junior year football season has been a bridge too far for him. A kid that once enjoyed school now says he hates school. I think most of us can agree, as we think back to high school, that we don't remember listening to a lecture on Shakespeare. We remember the pep rallies, defeating the rival team, homecoming dances, graduation, and for me, it was banner competition. He and many of his friends have been playing football together since elementary school. They dream of being on the top of varsity team and taking the field on Friday nights. They will be juniors, and they are all very special to me. Several of them give me nicknames such as Flummah Jones, Sergeant, and Master Chief. There are thirty-two of them. It is one of the biggest classes Coach Carter has had. They are brothers and are playing together, and for Coach Carter, it is their turn. I would like to share something very special about this team. Our family is fortunate to live on this line. Many of these guys know.
Ms. Stegall Jones, you have five minutes.
We have, we love opening up to the children. Over the summer, there were many discussions on the dock and back porch regarding the racial unrest in our country and city. I'm not sure the exact number, but it's pretty close to fifty percent white and fifty percent athletic of color on this team, and that is generally the makeup of the kids in our home. What was clear to me was that these football players do not see color. They just love their friends and genuinely, they just love their friends and teammates. Isn't that what we are striving for? It is an environment that Coach Carter fosters. This summer, he talked to them about how they were feeling and generally cared about how they felt. That's what you don't see on the scoreboard. Can I do one more?
Quickly, quickly.
One more scorecard or in the media. Thank you for, thank you, that is what you put at risk by your decision. Dr. Barton Luther King said, "Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And that is why our parents choose athletics for their children. And I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on. Reports from our superintendent of staff, Dr. Barnett. Yeah, good point. This is a regular meeting of the board, so we're dealing with other issues related to the school system, um, so that everybody understands, to the extent we're having a conversation tonight about athletics, it is only for the contact sports that take place in the fall. And those contact sports are soccer and football. So, we're not talking about any other sports being impacted tonight. So, if you're here for other sports and that makes a difference to you, um, that's what we have on the agenda. But for now, we're going to move with other agenda items. Dr. Barnett?
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is building projects update. It's in your packet. We have an update on Indian Trail Intermediate Schools, proposed additions and alterations. Roofing project at Cherokee, Antocre Academy over in Jim. Additions and alterations to three elementary schools. If you've been by South Side, they have, uh, they have the fencing out and they started doing the prep work on the second floor of the school for the addition of four classrooms at that school. Liberty Bell Middle School is getting close to a, uh, a finished date. So, Joe Barnes is here. If you have any questions about anything on the, on the report for Jenna or me. No questions? Second, uh, report is the financial report ending June thirtieth, Leah Valley.
Revenues for the year totaled seventy-seven million, two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. And expenditures totaled seventy-six million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, resulting in a net increase of three hundred and five thousand dollars. Total revenues were three hundred fifty-two thousand above budget for the year. And this was primarily due to whole option sales tax. Sales tax came in four point five percent above budget or six hundred forty-seven thousand. Other revenues, including property taxes, BEP, and tuition, were down for the year. Uh, BEP was down. We had done a budget amendment because we were planning on a growth payment. And when it got to the end of the year, the state decided we did not qualify for it. So, that's why we came under budget of BEP. When we were working on the final budget amendment for nineteen twenty and the twenty-twenty one budget, we had planned for large decreases in sales tax collections. However, that did not occur. But we did anticipate at that time a decrease in sales tax collections of approximately just under two million dollars and an any fund balance of five point three million dollars. However, due to the increase in sales tax we saw and some savings and expenditures, we ended the year with a fund balance of eight million, one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. We are now, though at the time of year, when cash balances start to decrease, we have to monitor our cash flow closely. The balance of our cash today was three million, ninety thousand dollars. We will receive reverse first B containment for the year this week. For, uh, FY twenty twenty-one, there's still a lot that we don't know. When we meet next month and review over July, I think we'll have some more clear answers for you, but primarily staffing, we're still looking at placing people as we settle in, seeing what needs to count. If we do have, we may have increased expenses for personnel, if any have to be sent and leave due to illness or if they have quarantine. So, we're just anticipating making increases there. And then we do know that our BEP revenues have come below budget because at the end of June, the state took out that two percent increase that we had budgeted for in our BEP, so that's four hundred thousand. But I anticipate if we continue to see the sales tax numbers, that should cover that. On our Carisact grant funds, so far, we've used those funds for the summer online classes to put in order for Chromebooks for third and fourth grade, teacher laptops, additional software, and UV sanitizers. We're still looking to use that for special education needs, library needed collections, or some of the uses we're still in, digital golfing cameras. In nineteen twenty, we did see additional expenditures due to the pandemic and the closure that totaled a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We did receive donation funds, though, for twenty thousand, five hundred to help offset that. And then so far this year, we've seen additional expenditures that we've tracked due to the closure in the pandemic for twenty-six thousand, five hundred. Now, we are working with the city to request reimbursement for the TMA. There were a percent five percent for expenditures that do approve. It is a time through soon process. It'll be a little while before we get that turned around. Our education programs did see a large decline in their combined fund balances for nineteen twenty. We're in the process of working with those programs to, uh, provide applications, funding through the Carisact that's available for childcare programs. So, that should help offset some of those losses of programs saw. And then on the insurance fund, uh, we do not yet have June funding. Also, the city's still working on closing out their books for the year. We did anticipate an ending fund balance for the year of a hundred thousand dollars. Our Q claims ran higher than we anticipated. Out of the eight hundred thousand budget, they come from general purpose school fund, fund balance to the insurance fund that we did for this year. We went ahead and transferred four hundred thousand dollars of that in July. Any questions on the financials?
I just think it's amazing when we were sitting here in April thinking what our sales tax would look like, and we thought it would be horrible. And the fact that we are not only okay, we're above where we were last year overall, I think that's, that's just phenomenal. And the only thing I think that we can attribute that to is we are now receiving some proceeds from online sales that we were not in the past. So, without that, I think we would be in much, much worse shape, so.
I, I, I think that timing could have been better. I really do think it's online sales, and I think when we look at the P P fund that shows it probably must be online sales. Because when we look at the P P, we'll see that the city did not see the increase that we saw. So, we know our increase came from the county, and I don't know of any additional businesses that we've been able to generate that, so I think that has to be the online sales.
I can tell you firsthand, it wasn't only online sales, because I know myself and a number of other businesses that were conducive to, uh, social distancing, that their sales went crazy the other way, not for a long time, but until they ran out of product.
But, but when you close them all and close at least half the restaurants completely, and the fact that we didn't see sales tax go completely down, it's just amazing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And online sales were a big part, and I'm saying I don't think that was the only part.
For the month of April, when we saw, you know, most businesses were closed, and we had a decrease of nine percent. I anticipated that was going to be much higher. That was really.
And then it got better.
Very good, yeah. It was very fortunate.
So, is the, Leah, is the most granular level that they attribute those online sales at the county level, they can't attribute it to the city level?
Well, when I looked and compared on the P P report, what kind of increase the city saw compared to what we saw for what we contributed to the P P fund, the city just saw a point seven percent increase, where we had four point two percent increase of what we put aside. I go back to be more closer with the analysis, but I basically feel like some money's been generated through the county.
Right, interesting.
Different topic on the insurance side. Was that transfer because we were out or just precautionary?
Precautionary, yeah. I don't have the exact figures yet from the city, because there'll be some rules based on timing of when the claims are born and they're received, but due to the increased costs, I felt to be precautionary. We needed it in there.
Okay, well, that just makes me feel better, because, Governor.
Another question's for Leah. Okay, is there a motion to approve the report?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And opposed.
Update on sales tax, P P, Leah Valley.
I just mentioned, um, collections for the big year. Four two percent above this time last year. The city portion saw an increase of point seven percent, and school portion saw an increase of four point two percent. For the year, the cash balance saw an increase of seven hundred and nine two thousand dollars. Said, I, I think when you look at that, that makes you think that the online sales had to play a strong factor in that increase of sales taxes saw.
Questions for Leah? Miss Hager, do you have something? Okay, any questions? Thank you, Leah.
Thank you. Next, we have an update on remote learning. It'd be, uh, Dr. Timms coming up to talk about that. And, uh, like any first day of school, you have, uh, situations you have to work through. And I had a lot of, uh, very hectic morning, I guess, Dr. Timms, and then it seemed to settle in, and a lot of, a lot of positives from schools, uh, as well as a lot of areas that we need to grow up and more aware of that lesson. Doug, uh, Dr. Timms, thanks for giving the.
And I, I jot it down, a lot of notes. I was taking notes. Uh, we, we take a lot of good notes today, um, sent out, uh, emails to, uh, the principals. We've got a lot of positives back as well as some areas of growth. Uh, I myself, uh, at the high school, I was probably in and out of about twenty-six rooms this afternoon, debriefing with, uh, teachers. So, I'm just going to give a rundown and then we'll entertain any questions. And also, uh, I think it would be great to hear from, uh, perhaps three principals real quickly, just what it looked like on the ground all day. So, I've asked Mr. Barnett, Dr. Flora, and Ms. McGill to talk perhaps from those three different levels. Like you've heard, um, and what we anticipated and not knowing going into the end, now, we knew a few weeks ago that we were going to be serving approximately twenty-six hundred remote learners in Johnson City. And over the last three, uh, three weeks, that moved from, uh, twenty-six hundred to seventy-nine hundred, uh, remote learners, serving all of our students in Johnson City from all of our teachers in a fully remote learning environment. And we're learning our way in balancing, uh, what the state is asking of, of, of us in terms of number of hours per day, the type of engagement, the, the CLP, the Continuous Learning Plan that was approved by the State Department. Dr. Anderson led that work here. We are looking at how we can balance the synchronous and the asynchronous, the live versus the recorded video. I can tell you that over the last, uh, couple of weeks, our teachers have really begun to perfect their ability to, uh, record their lessons, uh, beforehand. So, I think we will be able to make a shift to looking at how can we better not have all of our students hitting the system at one time. So I think we will be able to make a shift to looking at how can we better not have all of our students hitting the system at one time. Canvas, of course, is, is not the issue in our district as far as speed. I mean, Canvas is a learning management system that serves millions of students all around the world. So it's not so much that, but it is the number going out through our pipeline that's hitting our SSO and going out and, and hitting some of those. So definitely, we could look at perhaps some staggered pieces as well as the recorded video pieces that would allow our students to watch those at different times during the day or even into the evening. Mr. Red could perhaps speak to this, but Chromebooks, as you know, has been our device of choice mainly because of ease of use for students and also cost. You know, a Chromebook is, is never going to get you the, the speed and the performance that a MacBook or a high-speed PC might get. It has worked for our students. And one thing that we pushed out to our students this afternoon, or we pushed out to the teachers to share with them tomorrow, please remember to have patience while things are loaded because Chromebooks do, by their very nature, take a little bit longer to load. I think our teachers are really still navigating their design of their classes. I know that over the weekend, we went in and audited every single Canvas class in the district. Between myself and the principals, we tried to lay eyes on every single class, which if you think about an elementary teacher, all of them have, most of them have four classes. They have one for each of their, their content areas. They're still learning a lot about design. I think we've come a long way from spring in how our teachers are designing. We do have a district template that we're using and they're still navigating how to efficiently push out a lot of, a lot of content to reflect the rigor of what's going on in the classroom. One example, today, I was talking to Floyd Brown when I was in high school and a lot of you know Mr. Brown, he's a longtime math teacher at Science Hill. In his calculus A B class, he actually had a, about an hour and ten minute class time that was live teaching calculus A B today. That is a drax, drastic change from what we saw in the spring at Science Hill. And the rooms that I was in and out of, I think as the day progressed, teachers got a little more comfortable. I will say that we're, we're already looking at Zoom versus Google Meet versus Microsoft Teams. We had a lot of teachers who really wanted to try to use Zoom because it does have more protections in place. But Zoom is a platform that is not nested down inside of our current platforms like Microsoft Teams and Google Meet are. So that's one we may have to let go of. We ran into some glitches because there was an update to the Chrome browser that was just pushed out yesterday. And had students not opened up their Chromebooks for a while, a lot of those updates were hitting. That's what was causing some of the slowdown this morning. But because of what we're seeing, we're going to be very flexible. And to use Mr. Barnett's word, we're going to try to be very nimble with deciding what's working and what's not working. So you will probably hear in the next few days, we will be backing off of Zoom. And Melanie has already found out that Zoom, we now know when Zoom is ending their free to education offer and that is September first. So we might as well go ahead and come back to the applications that we have, even though it does not have a lot of the features. Both Google and Microsoft are adding those features as, as we progress through the days. So looking at what our teachers have been able to do, I just want to mention the monumental lift that they had last week. We've had a real paradigm shift in education. And like Dr. Barnett mentioned, most of them, all of them, were not back into the schools until July the, the thirty first. So just a little over a week ago. So we're still working through this. And again, moving from planning for twenty six hundred students who've signed up for remote learning, moving to seventy nine hundred, that has been monumental. And I know there's districts across the state, I've talked with colleagues in other districts near us today who are struggling with a lot of these same pieces. I will brag on Johnson City schools, on our parents, on our teachers, on our students for being very resilient today. And attendance, which is huge, as I was in and out of those classrooms at the high school, attendance and meetings was very, very high today. Students were engaged, they were ready to be there. Yes, every teacher that I talked to today at the high school when I was in and out, they want those students in front of them in the classroom. So I know that they're voicing that to their, to their students. A lot of those students, as we mentioned earlier, right at seventy percent, want to be there. But today was day one of a long journey. And, you know, the hardest step is usually when you begin. And, and no matter how much planning went in and how much design and training and support, and the principals have been tireless this last week in supporting their teachers and giving them the time and the space to make this happen, it's not until you step off and start that journey that you realize where we need to, to navigate and, and make some changes. You know, we ask our students and our teachers all the time to have a growth mindset. And we're trying to have a growth mindset as we navigate these, these waters. And there's really no, no playbook for this. And as always, we're trying to lead in Johnson City and share where we're going with, with other districts, not just in our region, but, but across the state. And it's going to take a lot of, a great deal of grace, a great deal of patience. And, you know, at the end of day one, and when I walked out of the high school at about three thirty this afternoon after visiting those rooms, I couldn't have been more happy to hear in twenty five voices the air of some things happened today, but we'll get better at this tomorrow. And we'll get better out of the next day, and we'll get better out of the next day. So that's my rundown on where we're at with, with today. And I would love if Mr. Barnett or Dr. Flora or Ms. McGill would like to add anything to that about what it looked like on the ground throughout the day. I was here most of the morning and then out at the, at the high school this afternoon.
Well, I'm going to add a couple of things. One, you have, I know there are families that are nervous about tardies. And we had a principals meeting from four until this meeting. So the principals know we have a lot of grace getting this started with tardies, absences. We're going to be knocking on doors, looking for students that don't show up so we can help get out into homes, make sure people who haven't made contact figure out what that is and make sure that they can do that. So something that you've worked on essentially since March, we've all worked on and, and worked to develop. And it's still just, it's just a really difficult task. And we're going, we're up to it and we're going to get through it. It's going to get better. And then the next thing on the agenda we'll talk about as well. Mr. Barnett, thanks for coming.
Thank you for letting me speak this for me. One thing I wanted, I want to echo Dr. Tim's comments. Our teach, first of all, our teachers were fantastic today. We started out with some of our normal first to the year, first day of the year hiccups, except instead of the navigation being, trying to find classes and navigate the building, they were just trying to navigate technology with Canvas and with Zoom and Google Meets and some of those things. Our teachers were great, attitudes were great. Of all the feedback I got from a number of teachers today, kids were fantastic, attendance was good. Several times, we know of some issues that would happen during a particular class that the students would actually get up and help each other with some of the things, just like they would in a normal classroom. So I keep saying enough good things about our teachers and our kids. One example I have over here is from one of my teachers, had about a hundred kids in class. All of them, but fifteen she had made contact with during her class, at some point during the class or during the day, the fifteen, several of the fifteen that she hadn't made contact with actually contacted her and let her know that they were having some connection problems. Our kids want to be engaged, there's no doubt about that, we can see that by today. And today was day one of, of a significantly long journey and we'll get better each day. The big thing I wanted to say from our people today was take the first step, log on, take care of your kids, I know you want to see your kids, our kids want to see their teachers. And a lot of that happened today. So we'll build on it, we'll be better tomorrow than we were today. And as we go through the next few weeks, we'll get significantly better.
Todd, I want to commend your, your admin team, your counselors and teachers. They moved, they made a switch because what's, was decided was in the best interest of students was to allow students in a lot of the coursework at Science Hill to be able to be remote to start, but then when, they're going to be in person. But within that, when we come back in person, they're going to have kids that are still remote, families that are still anxious about it and want to be remote, but they'll be able to be in those classes. It really came down to the teaching staff and our students and their ability to be online and learn as a, as a high school student, as a learner, that we're able to pull that off. But they had to hand schedule twenty four, twenty, twenty three hundred students at Science Hill, twelve hundred at, at Liberty Bell. And that was in a week. So that's one of those things, when we're trying to work on schedules and get those schedules out, it's always difficult at the high school. And, and at Liberty Bell, when you're trying to provide the offerings that we want to provide our students so they can graduate and they can continue to stay on the path they're on, that's a really difficult thing to get it all done. And they did a great job getting it done and being able to get students in classes. I know you all are going to work to some of the courses and schedules and that's typical in any year. And the remote learning has, you know, we have additional variables added to the, to this big puzzle piece that we put together every year. But they, they've done a great job with that. Our students, our families have been very patient and, and are helping us work through that.
Thank you. And the last thing I say, I, I really appreciate the support of the board and the administration for everything you have allowed us to put in place for our kids to have this opportunity. So I, again, I appreciate all of it.
Ms. McGill, well, thank you, Lauren.
Who knows, I never turn down a interview. And if you think I'm right.
This is the first email back.
It was. I wanted to tell you that I'm honored to, this is my forty seventh opening day. I traded teaching some emails, how to teach their parents by bringing them in to help them get logged on, which we try to get out in front of that need. So I traded that from the five kindergartners that get on the bus that can't tell us their name. And so that was a different, it's just a different kind of madness. I would like to say by the end of the day, we only had out of five hundred and fourteen students, forty four that we weren't logged on with. So actually contact virtually, but now getting them logged on for the first time, I think that was pretty typical of first day. And I have about ten or twenty people waiting for me to help them to get registered. And then at the end of the day, the teachers were great. They were helping us to teach, go out and do, seek and find whose Chromebook or whose iPad wasn't doing the right thing. I made our tech assistant and our secretary sign a pledge that they'd come back tomorrow. And the tech assistants were great. But as people were having lunches, we were asking them to bring them in and sitting down to see what the problem was and then giving them a new machine if we needed to renew a device. But all in all, I felt really like it was productive. I want to say that some of the things that were mentioned that we even talked about in our meeting, like synchronizing, some of the things that would have helped families. You know, we're always wanting to help our families, we want to see our kids, we long to treasure them in person. You know, we all have that passion for that. But I really appreciate all the support, the tech support that we had. And like I said, we traded a different kind of day to my, trying to figure out how to get people home safely. At the end of the day, I said, nobody got back, come back on the bus that we couldn't figure out where they lived, you know, because they were new to us. So people were safe, but we were wanting to help them to be.
Yeah, that's still going to happen when we come back in person.
I still have that to look forward to. Can I count that, opening day forty eight?
My radio.
I can still count there, my fortieth day, forty eighth opening day. Thank you, thank you for all you do to support us. We, we too long to see our students, but thank you.
Thanks, Skip. Dr. Flora? Might be Dr. Flora's first time speaking.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Holly Flora, principal at Liberty Bell, officially to the floor.
Welcome, Dr. Flora.
Thank you very much, I, I'm really happy to be here. When Dr. Tim asked me to speak, I thought he was kidding. But really, I do, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. Just some reflections I've had over the last two weeks. It's just been very humbling and an honor to be among teachers as they're back at school. Their passion is working with students and being with one another. Teachers are by nature fixers. And so to be able to be back in their home environment, doing what they were called to do, has just really been inspiring to see. They've been working very hard. They've appreciated, and I appreciate as a new employee here in the district, the training that has happened at the district level for our teachers in helping support them in rising to the challenge of online instruction. It's been impressive to see that a district isn't just saying, hey, do this, but really giving the teachers and the instructional assistants training so that they can best equip themselves to be able to provide instruction for students. Last week, we really talked about the phrase embrace the challenge because as educators, we are facing a challenge, we're facing a challenge in whether we open schools or whether we're doing online instruction. And so we have really tried to just take one step at a time, focus in on what we can do, the solutions that we have, and really just be very graceful. And so today, I think that that's what I saw with the teachers at Liberty Bell. There were some glitches throughout the day, but nothing that we weren't able to handle and nothing that they didn't face with optimism and a belief that we could fix it, if not today, tomorrow. We answered a lot of phone calls, took a lot of notes and plan on having a meeting with teachers who can help us think through the concerns that were shared so that we can best simplify the message that we're giving to parents and students and really respond to what the concerns are, the questions that are still out there. And so I think that as we go forward, what we're going to do tomorrow is just wake up, have a new day, do a little better than we did today, and we'll continue to problem solve. Again, I think, I, you know, being new to this district, the online instruction that's being provided by Johnson City is impressive. Most of the districts around this area are providing an online program that is nowhere near the rigor of instruction that Johnson City is providing. And so I do want to just acknowledge the fact that our curriculum coordinators and our teachers have really worked to try to provide the most rigorous and robust instruction for our students that have chosen remote learning so that when we do come back, and we're all coming back in person, that they will be as close to proficiency as the students who were sitting there in person. And so I just want to thank, thank the district for that as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Had much sleep the last week? No. Thank you for all you've done. It's been a huge village that's worked on this, it's been, it's been awe inspiring.
I do have a question regarding with the problems that happened with the Chromebooks this morning. And as I looked at social media and the people that I contact through social media, a lot of them said they had to go to private, private.
I'll ask Mr. Red to come up now and that's from the tech side.
And so how do we cover, I mean, my son couldn't find his charger last night. So he did not even try his Chromebook, he used a laptop. But how do we cover for those kids who might not have a laptop or a desktop in their home? So when they're, when they can't get on with their Chromebook, they can still go to class?
That's a very good question. As Dr. Flora said, face the challenge. It has definitely been a challenge for tech support. It's not only in Johnson City that we're having issues, I mean, our, our Chromebook problems today are not unusual. This is typical for the first day of school, for devices that have been sitting. It's just that we, in the past, have been able to address those on site. So trying to work through those remotely has been definitely a challenge. We will try our best to replace devices that we have determined are need replacement. The problem we're having, and it's not just Johnson City, it's a worldwide problem, trying to get devices, trying to get parts because the whole world is, is trying as well. So we are, we're doing the best we can to fix the devices remotely if possible, asking the parents to bring the devices back in to swap them out. But it, it is a challenge. So we're doing the best we can with what we have.
The, the other thing that I saw numerous times today was people who, parents are working remotely from home. remotely from home and they have two, three, four, five kids who are taking classes remotely from home and their personal Wi-Fi's at home are not able to take care of all of them using them at the same time. And I, I mean, I have no idea how to address that, but I did see that a few times today with people, with parents just talking about, what do I do for that? So how can we help parents who are in that situation?
We have them providing hotspots for families that, that need them. With those, it is a cellular service. And as everyone knows, there are certain areas in the city that those cellular devices do not work well. We can't guarantee that. All we can do is provide those. We have a limited number of those, so right now we are providing one per family for, for the need. So they just need to contact their schools.
Okay.
And we're getting those out as soon as we. So Ms. Trace, that could be part of us rethinking and looking at what we had as a mental state with how we'll balance. How will balance our live and our A-C business? So.
And just to give advice for people that have multiple homes, if any of them have an actual laptop that they can plug a network cable into, if, if there's a difference between the bandwidth to the ISP versus the bandwidth through Wi-Fi, so if they can take some of that off their Wi-Fi, then the one still laptop Wi-Fi will get a little better bandwidth inside the house.
Absolutely. Wired is always better than wireless in any instance.
And if they've lost their charging cord, they call the school. We have some. We'll get that.
Those are on back order.
Are we out?
They have, they have been, yes, they have been ordered and our provider has let me know today that they are on back order. Again, that's the parts that everybody in the world.
But they should still call so we can work that solution.
Yes, they should still call and we are trying to, and we're trying to get what we can.
So maybe they need to clean their rooms?
We had a lot of, when the devices were turned in last year, we had a lot of chargers that were not turned in with those devices.
Any other questions? Thank you all. Thank you.
Can you just say something real quick? Folks, I know it's hard to sit through a long meeting and wearing these masks and everything, but as we're sitting here, I noticed some people letting their mask etiquette sort of slip. So please make sure that you keep those masks firmly covering your nose and mouth. Protects everybody here. So, thank you.
Last report I have for tonight is update on the reentry plan. We have our workshop scheduled for Monday of next week, formerly also known as a retreat. But Mr. Kinnick always says he doesn't get to hang out by the pool. It's not fun. So it's, it's a workshop that we're going to have and what is one of the things we're going to talk about. So the first thing on the agenda is a report from a local physician. And I spoke with her today because I had concerns about, you know, not concerns, but Dr. Wallace, and he's going to talk in a minute too. We're looking at the numbers of COVID cases coming down. We had one day it was pretty high last week, but it looked like they were coming down. So I was hopeful, you know, if that'll flatten and start heading in the, in a downward wave, then we can put, put the plan in place to have in-person instruction, what that'll look like. So we'll have some scenarios for the board next Monday. I talked to Dr. Thomas and she was recommended to me by another local pediatrician, David Wood, Dr. Wood. And we talked, and Dr. Wallace has talked to her quite a bit, but she said basically current, the current metric, we're a high community spread under any, under any metric right now because of the amount of spread that we've had. So we're looking at those numbers, people wearing the mask, doing the CDC recommended guidance that we're following, and we're hoping that will go in the right direction and we'll be able to put that plan in place. And teachers, principals, superintendent, school board members, we're all about developing relationships with children. Coaches are about developing relationships with children. That's what everybody remembers from school, those teachers that had the impact because of the relationships they developed and what they did for you and how you interacted with them. People that grew up to be teachers, they can always point back to the teacher they had. And they, I know this board and I, all, everybody wants us to be able to offer in-person school, everybody. So we're working with Dr. Thomas and to help us see what that looks like. We'll have some scenarios for some hybrid scheduling and in-person and getting that ready. And hopefully we continue in the correct direct, in the right direction, we're able to do that.
Just to be clear, though, we will not be voting at our workshop.
No, it's a workshop.
That's just information, so the vote will come later on.
That's right. Yes, thank you. So I asked Dr. Wallace, we talked about it quite a bit today, asked Tepica to talk through a little bit of what we're planning and looking at so we can get an idea before next week's workshop.
I think you took my.
Probably, probably covered most of them.
Yeah, you did. Ms. Trace, I'll just say that my sixteen-year-old could not find her charger either, so if that makes you feel any better.
It does.
I don't know what Dylan's room looks like, but I know what my sixteen-year-old room looks like, so I'm sure it's fair. As Dr. Barnett mentioned, I think the first thing that we talked about today is really by any metric, to me, that was kind of a pull point from our conversation today, that we would be considered in extensive community spread. If you look at the number of active cases, even in Washington County, compared with some of the counties around us, it's disappointing. Dr. Barnett says all the time, he's an eternal optimist, he was looking at five days of numbers that had dropped, a low number of seventeen on Thursday, and he was excited. And then we had a sixty-nine on Friday, and then we've had a pretty level of twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-five the last two days. So we continue to look at those numbers. We continue to look at what, what that means for us as, as a school community and what means for our family. And reiterating, we, as a husband and a teacher, as a father, I want my child, I want my wife to be able to teach children in person. We think that's the most effective way. We want to do that safely. We want to do that appropriately. We're looking at a lot of different models. I've mentioned to you before, one of the states, safety mentors, I have an opportunity to talk with other people like me across the state, have an opportunity to look at what they're doing and what they're attempting to do. So we're looking at some hybrid plans, we're looking at AB schedules. I know that Dr. Tim mentioned what they started thinking about was how to improve the online instruction piece from after our closure in March. It really started in March and it's really been a four-year process with what the board has done to provide technology for our families. Same thing with our, our reentry plan. We started talking about this long before we were even, we even talked about its potential for bringing kids back in the spring. And that was actually our hope.
March fourth.
Yeah, so, so that.
I mean, May fourth.
Yeah, so it's something that we spent a lot of time on. I feel pretty confident that we will have a plan that will be put in place that will be able to bring students back at some level or another, whether it's, whether it's limited class sizes. Certainly we'll have some precautions that will be recommended to us that we'll ask, that we will require students to follow. And we hope to have several of those options for you to look at after the reentry. The big thing that I think I need to continue to emphasize, we mentioned on Wednesday with our meeting, whether we're talking about athletics, whether we're talking about academics, we're going to still follow our protocol. And I think that's really, really important. Mr. Turner stressed how, how important it is that his coaches follow it. It's going to be important for us as faculty and for us teachers, for our students. And where that impacts not only our students, it also impacts our teachers as well. For instance, one positive case in school, if, if they are in close proximity of other teachers, it could affect eight or nine teachers pretty quickly. And you could easily shut down a classroom, you could easily shut down a wing, potentially shut down an individual school for, for a period of time. So we have to be cognizant of that. We try to, we talked today with our principals about making sure that we do as many large group meetings virtually so that we don't impact the number of teachers. Because obviously, in a normal year, we have a hard time finding substitutes. In particular, we've in particular have a hard time finding substitutes in this situation, particularly over a fourteen period day, or period of time, which will, you know, which would be required if they were in quarantine. So remember, identify, isolate, trace. You've heard us talk a lot about that. We, one of the things that Dr. Thomas mentioned today, we're very fortunate that we have Jennifer Norton as our coordinator of school, just coming from the medical field that's supporting us, that's making sure that, that we are identifying all those people quickly and trying to make sure that we isolate them as quickly as possible, getting them back as soon as possible. So that's kind of where we are right now, but it's not, it's not a new process for us. We, Dr. Barnett, probably daily sends me different information about what do you think about this proposal? What do you think about this idea? We look through it, share with our, and collaborate with our regional health experts to see what their thoughts are and try to think of the easiest and best way to bring our students back. Because that's what we're doing.
Now, our, our plan for safety and protocols is based on CDC guidance, American Academy of Pediatrics. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And it's important, we've, I mentioned this again on Wednesday too, is that we look at all of that guidance, so not just, not just bits and pieces, but we try to look at all of those pieces. If you, we talked about community spread, not we, they talked about community spread being ten plus. Our, our number today was thirty-two. That's dropped down a few points from our high, but it's still, you know, pretty high. I think when I mentioned to you, to our last regular scheduling, I think we were forty-nine from the state. At that time, the last I looked, I think we were twenty-seven from the state as far as the number of counties that, that were ahead of us or below us as far as the non-community spread. So we were obviously trending in the wrong direction. Like Dr. Barnett says, we hope that with the mask requirements, that that's something that's leveled off and that we'll be able to say it's a pretty stable number and we feel confident in being able to bring our students back safely so that they can have in-person learning. So questions for me?
We'll have this ready and go through on, to go through on Monday and have questions and work through it. Between now and then, I am the eternal optimist, it's going to go, the numbers are going to continue to get better.
We all hope you're right.
I think so.
Thank you.
Coming off of those two discussions, I want to just make a point, and this is for everybody in the room, it's for people watching us online. You know, everybody in our community is sick and tired of COVID-19. Nobody wants your children to be in class personally anymore than everybody that works for this school system. You've heard all of these administrators say that, you've heard the principals say that, I guarantee you, you talk to all the teachers and they would say that. All of us up here, I think, would say, your kids need to be in school. We have to balance that though with the risks that are there. And there are a lot of factors that have to go into the decision about not being in school live beyond just would your individual student potentially catch the virus by being in school? One of the big things we have to consider is would any of our teachers catch it? Because if you have a teacher who becomes infected with the virus and has to quarantine from her classroom for ten or fourteen days or longer, we don't have an easy way to back to that teacher. And, you know, in a regular class, I think Dr. Wallace said, it's hard enough to find a substitute to come in and take over that class and be highly effective. Imagine having a substitute come in and take over an online class and have to teach that or, or a partial online or teach kids in this environment with COVID. So we've got to, there are a lot of factors we've got to, got to consider. And I only say all this to say, everybody, we're all in this and we're trying to navigate something that nobody alive today has had to navigate. And I would ask that you extend to, you know, your school staff, teachers, principals, the administrative staff, as much grace as possible while we're trying to navigate through this. Because they got a really tough job and a big burden on their shoulders. And a kind word here and there is going to go a long way to encourage them and help them to make the best decisions and do the best job for your children. That's not to say we don't want anybody giving us constructive criticism and helping to figure out the best way to go through this thing. But at the same time, please, please extend some, some grace to these folks because it's, it's something that's unprecedented and trying to navigate through the best way possible. And I will say this, I think we have the best and most talented staff of people, starting with this gentleman here and all the way down through his staff, the principals, our teachers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, everybody. They love your kids and they want nothing but the best for your children. And so if we all can keep that in mind as we try to navigate through this, even though we're frustrated, I think it will make, it will make this time a lot more, a lot more easy to get through. So, thank you.
I mentioned one more thing. It's the, I'm thinking, our EduCare program, we made a choice to support our community back when everybody was on lockdown and basically had stayed home orders. And we made the decision against what a lot of other systems wouldn't do. And we had our EduCare programs open to support families that were from essential, essential work, what was deemed as essential workers. And we've continued that. So that's a model for how we can do this. It's, it's been a model. When I talk about it, it makes me a little anxious because I don't want an outbreak in EduCare, but our EduCare programs are example in a smaller setting of how we've been able to follow the procedures that we have in place to keep the staff and the students healthy. And that's, that, we've continued that service all the way through and we're able to have summer school programming. But, you know, graduation and summer school, we're in that window where we were still in yellow and green and things skyrocketed, but we've kept those programs open because we, we, one of the things that keeps you up at night is the worry of the parent with five kids who's trying to do remote or the parent with one who's struggling with it. It all, it's just so hard. And, and we're just really trying to work through that. But I think that our EduCare is a good model and of what can be done, how you can do it safely. Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Barnett on any of those topics? Okay, moving on to unfinished business, this is an update on the discussion regarding Governor Lee's executive order number fifty-five, T double S double A's regulations, another factor regarding contact sports. Barnett, did you have anything to start us off or?
You know, we've all received a lot of feedback from, from student athletes, from parents, from, from both sides of this. So there's no doubt in my mind of what the academy, you know, American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations and what comes through, through pediatricians in our community about the importance of in-person school and also athletics. I guess, you know, it comes down to some choices that, that parents are going to need to make and we're going to have to make as far as safety goes and what we put in place at our school level to, to do everything we can do to make practice safe. You know, we started with this as well way back in, in, in the summer, probably late spring, early summer. And Mr. Turner was on calls with us as superintendents. We do regional ZIMCON. I feel like our region really led the way as far as putting those procedures in place. T double S double A guidance that came out as, as far as crowd size is probably a little more structured than what we've had in place. And that, that calls for smaller crowd sizes than half. It's really one quarter or one third of the students there. You know, some of the, some of the feedback we've gotten or opinion we have had has been, almost all of it has just been very polite, very positive, very well-written, well-thought-out and just so, you know, please consider this. And that just impresses me and I think it says a whole lot about our community. You know, I shared with somebody the other day that my father-in-law always. You know, I shared with somebody the other day that my father-in-law always, because forever, I've always said, I get to go to work, I get to go to work. And he said, you still get to go to work? And I said, yeah, I do, because our community cares about each other. They care about their own children, they care about everybody else's kids. And everything that's written was out of love for children and care for one side or the other of very difficult decisions that we're having to make. In-person schooling and, and athletics, all those things, everybody that writes those, they're either desperate because it's really hard to find childcare, and I totally get that, or it's just hard to have your kids and try to work. But also with the athletics, this is out of that love and desire for, for us to be able to have everything for our kids that we want them to have. I don't know if that helped, but that's, that's all.
We have had a lot of communication, and, you know, there's, it's, it's a tough decision, and I have mixed feelings about a lot of it. But one of the places I don't have a lot of mixed feelings about is limiting the crowd size. I know there's other, other schools that have decided to only let immediate families of the players into the stadium, players in bands, band, and I think that is one way we can do the responsible thing and not try to make community spread even worse by getting 3,000 people together. So I'd like to make a motion that we can let fall sports continue, but that we limit crowds to just immediate families of the, of the players and, and any supported by band or cheerleaders.
Before there's consideration for a second, Miss Hall, you said fall sports, would you, do you, because the only thing we've discussed is contact sports.
You're right, okay, so let's, let's say contact sports, let me change that to contact sports. And I'd also like to add the caveat, until, you know, if, if our numbers drop considerably, then we change. But right now, at this point in time, I just can't imagine letting 3,000 people together in the stadium by, by a pop form.
There's a motion, is there a second? Okay, motion, balance for like a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow football and soccer, just to be specific, that's what we're talking about right now, like you said at the beginning, I mean, that we allow those sports to continue. I can comment more on why if we could get a second, but just to see if we want to discuss that. I'll second that.
Just for clarification, would that be to, to allow those sports to continue consistent with the, the safety plan that we presented last week?
With, with, with all of the precautions and safety plan and everything that we heard Wednesday night, with, with all of that.
And no desired amount modifications?
No, I felt comfortable with what I heard Wednesday night.
Okay, so consistent with your second?
Yes. And does that include crowd size?
What, what they said on the crowd size, which was...
What they said was a little bit different than T double S double A, they said 50%, I think T double S double A says 25%.
25 to one-third, part of their quarter to a third.
The, the key that I liked out of the plan for the football was they were only going to do numbered seats. I mean, your ticket had your seat on it, and so with that, you know, families might sit together, but family wouldn't sit right next to another family, and they would monitor that through the, the actual seat assignments, and we hope that people honor their seat assignments.
So Mr. Turner, remind us what the plan provides for?
Well, it's actually less than 50%, it's probably, you know, lower, lower quarters.
Could you come up to the microphone so people at home can hear?
When you look at the configuration of stadiums, you know, you can look at standing room, you can look at the banks, you look at the number of people that ETSU was able to put in our stadium when they played there, with some modifications, our attendance could be up to eight, nine, 10,000. We're going anywhere between 3,000 and 3,500, with two seats in between, in between each family, and 95% of the time, there's nobody sitting in front of anybody. That could happen if a family chose to do two seats here, two seats here, front and back. We have looked at that over and over since spring. I do know that there are some schools that are going with the 50% capacity, and I've seen the actual written email where the T double S double A said that was okay, and someone with a much larger stadium capacity than ours. Historically, with our stadium, you know, the first two, three games are very well-attended, then after that, it's not an issue. I expect the same thing with our schedule that we have this year, that the first couple of games will be maxed on what we allow, and then after that, I will see it being an issue. We are going to mark off, try to have every seat assigned so that you can control that better instead of just selling tickets and having them go. We're going to have caution tape in the areas where they're not supposed to sit, we've got signage, we've got temperature checks, we've got hand sanitizers, we're going to have extra custodians in bathrooms. So we feel confident in, in our plan. Does that guarantee that somebody doesn't, it'll have it? No, it does not, I'm not going to tell you that. But we feel like we have a plan in place, we've dealt with it, and many schools have dealt with it, and we, we look at it like graduation, you do everything you can to possibly have it, and then if you can't, at least our students know we did everything that we could to try to make that happen.
I have no doubt, you guys have done a great job planning, and I'm not disagreeing with that. I am disagreeing with having 3,000, 3,500 people gather at this point in time, and, and it doesn't make me feel better that it's, when our numbers are the highest is when we're going to have the biggest crowds, and then it might dissipate.
What's the actual seating capacity of the stadium?
Right now, without bringing any, any bleachers in there at all, would be about 7,500. That's not counting the bank, which we're, we're looking at that for some special circumstances, you know, where we can isolate some people that may have some issues that really, like grandparents that really want to come, don't need to be around anybody, we're sort of, you know, doing that there, but we can bring in a lot more down on the end zones and separate it. But like with the student section, for example, that we are planning, we've got about 350 tickets that we could sell for students. That would be one here, two seats in between, and one here, and nobody behind it. Now, getting them to stay in that should be the administration's job, but I, I feel like in the last few weeks, I think our students are sort of taking it a little bit more serious. I've seen a lot of chatter between our teams and stuff about them, you know, taking ownership, you know, just tell them, put your mask on, do this, do that, so.
Really, this is not, not anything about lack of plan, and I, I wish we pick out a lot of people there. If, if I vote not in support of this motion, it's not about the playing of the game, it's about, it's about the crowd.
You know, we received a lot of phone calls, texts, emails over the last week and a half, and I can only, I would guess 80 to 100, many of us received the same ones. And I can only remember one that was not in support of, of having fall sports. And at our hall meeting last week, Mr. Turner and Coach, Coach Carter did a great job of presenting the plan, the procedures, and I was extremely impressed. We're going over and above the state mandate in, in many of these procedures. But I wasn't surprised because John City School System, we do things excellent, everything in all that we do, and I believe that their plan can work, and I think we need to try to give it a chance. These kids deserve it, they've been through a lot, and I would really like for us to try and, and give it a chance to have fall sports.
Yeah, and like you, I read through all those emails, which I'm sure you did also, there's a lot of them, but we read through them all, we listened to them, paid attention to them, but even regardless of that, with something outside, I just don't have the same concern as something where you're locked in the same airspace in a classroom. And yes, it's contact, but there's something to be said for mental health and the other things that go along with football, football allows, you know, a fan to have a reason to do things and, and other things like that. And, you know, it could be in our protocols, if we end up getting some positives, that, you know, maybe it does get shut down for a week or two or something, that's in the protocol.
It is, it is.
Yeah, and, and so that could be the reality, that's all the more reason for people to really adhere the best they can to the masks and all the social distancing and the staying in their seats that they're supposed to and all that kind of stuff, but I just don't see, I mean, there's a balance there, but there's so many downsides to not doing it, I'd rather we go ahead and do it.
To me, limiting crowd size is doing everything we can to make sure that football can continue, because I think the more community spread we have, the more chances are it's going to shut down. And if we're really doing this for the kids and the athletes, it's about the kids and the athletes.
Another thing that we talked about at that meeting was the possibility of live-streaming the sports, so we could limit the number of people currently at the game, presently at the game, but also to, others could be engaged, whether they're at home or wherever watching them, so that's something I think, again, we talked about it on Wednesday, but I would, I would really encourage you to pursue that.
We've got a meeting Wednesday at 9:00 with people that are going to be able to make that happen pretty easily in the stadium for football, and it's more difficult with the, the other ones, but we, we can use the same format as we did for graduation and football.
But it, it could be an avenue that, not just the sport, but it could be any type of musical or dramatic performance where people could still be engaged by viewing this online and, and could have that as an ongoing program if we can get it in place.
I think also, I appreciate all the parents and community members who emailed and called and texted and all of that, but I also appreciate our student athletes who came here tonight. It's not necessarily fun to sit through one of these meetings, and y'all sat here for an hour and a half now, and I appreciate it, but I recognize a bunch of you because my son's been on teams with a lot of you. We need to look at that, one of the things that scares me the most right now is the CDC saying that, you know, we have a rise in teen suicides and drug overdoses, and although our student athletes are not our entire student population, they're a big part of it. And I would hate for lost opportunities for them, just like I'd hate for lost opportunities for any of our students. And the fact that they have the ability to be outside and do that, I think is just incredible. And I also think a lot of our community is going to choose not to come to these games. A lot of our older members who've come to games for 70, 50, 60, 70 years, because we do have people who've been here that long, I think they will choose, as long as they have a way to watch it, to not come. And I think some of our older community members will choose to come, just because they've never missed a game, even with the risk that they have. So I know it's, I mean, it's a huge risk, but it's also, one of the people that sent us emails said it's a choice, and I, I don't have a child who is, is in football or soccer, but I have a child who's in the band, and I've made the choice to let him go to band practice, which they say could possibly be just as bad as football as far as spreading of that, you know, you don't know what's coming out the end of a horn, although it just has to go through a lot of metal to do that. But it's a choice that I've made as a parent, and, but we also have opted for choices for, for parents who, for whatever reason, you know, don't want to make that choice, we have options for them too. And I liked that last week that you said, it's not going to hurt them if a child sits out a year on a sport, it's not going to hurt them to come back next year because their family, because of whatever reason, immunocompromised elderly family members living with them. I like that we had that in there too. But I think these kids need the opportunity to be outside, to get out. I know what the six-month lockdown has done to my three kids, and it's not been great. So I know getting out and doing is actually been really good for my kids too.
And, and you don't have a virtual option, so to speak, with the sport, I mean, yes, there's esports, but it's not the same, and it's probably not the same kid playing the physical football and the esports football, so it's not the same. So yeah, it's voluntary, and, and, you know, it'll be a challenge for the coaches, for somebody that is out of here, but I, I'm, I trust and I'm sure that they're going to do everything possible to, to make it as fair as possible. There'll be so many rotten talks on some of our sports and that kind of thing, and I get that, but, but I trust that they're not going to let anybody be negatively affected by making the decision for their health that they've, they've got to stay out because they got a parent or grandparent at home.
Mr. Hager?
Two questions. What are you going to do about people who don't, to hang on the fence?
Well, according to Mr. Peterson last week, if we can get additional funding through the CARES Act where we can pay for, or possibly get reimbursed for extra security, we will do that. Otherwise, I mean, it, I mean, it comes down to funds to be able to do that. And with reduced crowd sizes and all that, we're already going to be pushed, and with that, that number that we've determined there, it's safe to be in the stadium, if we can average that, then financially, we can make it this year. And when I say make it, I don't like to have to come before the board and have to ask for additional funding, I want it to take care of itself, but if we can somehow, that's something we have to determine, and I think he was actually in contact with Coach Carter today, talking about some additional stuff that we've done since we met last Wednesday, taking other precautions and some things that we purchased about doing that, but we, we'll have to, Mr. Hager.
So if you come into the stadium, you're going to go take a seat?
That, that's, yeah, we're selling all assigned seats for us right now. Now, that doesn't mean somebody can't stand that fence, but what if they're standing at the fence by themselves or spread out? That, that's what we would be looking for.
And the most important question at the moment for me, the motion entails all fall sports or?
The motion was for the two in question, football and soccer.
What about cross-country?
It's not a contact sport, so it's okay. It was only for the contact sports that the Wednesday meeting was called.
I think the public, the public doesn't understand contact sport versus...
So, so any of them, right, so any of them going on right now that aren't football and soccer are not part, they're not contact sports and they're okay?
I think the motion should...
Be for fall sports?
Should reflect that.
But that's, that's fine. I, yeah.
We still have crowd, you know, issues that we have to follow even in volleyball, and soccer, they're not as large as football, but we're going to use that same procedure and process in the gym and then on the soccer day, we're, we're supposed to start soccer and volleyball with our first home events next Tuesday, so.
So Mr. Hager, are you making a motion to amend the motion to define it all fall sports?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Got a motion and a second to amend the original motion?
I just don't want there to be any confusion. I've had some people be in touch with me, asking what about this sport or that sport? All we're hearing about is football. And to be honest with you, until we met last week, I didn't know what contact sport meant. And I've been, I've played a few sports. Basketball to me could be a contact sport.
Oh, it is. It is the same or the one-two.
It's just not going on yet.
Basketball is a contact sport, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think for everybody to understand, all fall sports are a go.
Yeah, and Tom, the only reason I just mentioned those two, because the, the other two you mentioned that are contact, just weren't going on yet, so I, that's what we were just talking about now, was the soccer and football.
Is baseball contact?
No, sorry. By, by their definition, it's the National Federation of High School.
Tom's played baseball, I think he thinks different.
So, Coach Turner...
They let you play a little rougher back then, too.
Coach Turner, could you like just list off what those fall sports entail? And, and I guess we should include like band and mountain biking, which aren't necessarily T double S double A sports, but are also sports that are, that are done in the fall.
Are offerings in the fall, is what you're asking?
Yes.
Football, and you have soccer... Football, and you have soccer, volleyball, cross-country, dance, cheer, uh, band, and mountain biking, and right in, and golf. And then right in the middle of sort of the season, swimming sort of starts earlier, and they're governed by a totally different body, but they've, they've been doing a lot of things to be able to have meets and stuff too. That's going to be a limited space. So what Coach Chris has done this summer for the baracudas is they'll let, they'll call the parents out of the parking lot, let them go in and watch the race or film them because it's a limited space. So they're already used to that when we get to the high school season.
I think, um, we're making some decisions based on, on dollars, and I'm not sure this is a year to do that. Uh, so as I go right through saying, if it's, we should not do this because of revenue. That's our only basis. There's way to make that up for one year. I know that our city has asked us to limit crowd size, and I'd be perfectly willing to have us as a board approach the city to, to help make some of those funds good.
And, and the flip side of that, I would say, you know, do what you need to to keep it safe. You know, don't let money stop you from doing something. Uh, we can't pull it out of thin air, but we'll figure something out. Uh, so if it's something that you got to do to keep it safe based on the teams and the crowds, then do it.
I have a comment from Michelle Treese also. Go on.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, so I would like to have at least some provision written in there about, uh, student responsibility. I mean, last week I said, even though we are above and beyond the call for guidelines and provisions from, from different levels, I would love to see that our students sign some type of a pledge saying that they will, will always be on guard about wearing masks, social distancing, and all that. If we as a staff, if we as school board are, are following that plan, I really need to see the students, uh, step up and do that plan as well. I think I heard one athlete from Libertyville Stadium, and she was willing to do that. I would love to see that from all of our students. Because if we are going above and beyond the fault of duty for this, and they are not, it's not, it's, it's going to be a problem. It's going to be a big problem in the end. Good answer.
So the motion. Turner, do you have any, do you have any response to that?
I mean, if that's what you ask, that's the easy thing. We've, we've got many, many forms on our dragonfly, don't we? And we can add that one too. It's a pledge. I mean, we, we ask them to take, uh, a hazing, they sign a thing for hazing, they sign a thing, uh, you know, for bullying, so that, that's an easy, easy addition. And, uh, since our meeting last Wednesday, just watching the football players today, I drove down there on purpose just to see, and I, I noticed a big difference in them today getting out of car, their cars, and I actually heard some of them yelling at their other teammates, you know, pull up your mask and that sort of thing. So I, I, I think the students are, they're understanding more now than they did. If they want to have a season, they're going to have to do their part even more.
So, Ms. Treese, are you making, uh, that comment as a motion to amend the motion to amend?
Don't we have to deal with the amendment motion first that's on the table?
Yeah.
I think we can stop.
You go up the ladder and then go down the ladder.
So, yes, you're making a motion?
Yes, I am making a motion. Will you add that amendment, please? I'll second that one also.
Okay. Is there further discussion on that amendment? We'll go ahead and vote on it, and then we'll get the second amendment or first amendment out of it.
I don't necessarily see the point just because, like Mr. Turner just said, uh, they, they already get it. And them signing something isn't going to necessarily make them do it any better than if they don't sign it, so I don't see the point.
I think it's a good, good reminder of we're all in this together and we all got to do our part.
Is that an ea- easy thing for you to do?
We'll do it if it's easy.
If it's an easy thing, fine.
I also see, I mean, I know how many forms you have to sign as a parent of a student athlete, and how many the athletes have to sign. But that shows that these kids, these kids that are here can be the leaders in that and make sure that the, their other team members are doing that. And the people from, you know, the kids from the other teams, the juniors and seniors can take the lead on that and, and make sure, you know, we have student leaders on our, on each of our teams and, and band and all of that. So I think those students are the ones who need to be the leaders in making sure that it's happening, but it doesn't hurt to have them sign it just because it, it kind of makes it a little bit more official.
It's a pledge, that's easy to do. I mean, we'll have the coffees and have them at practice, and that, that can be done in a day.
So what happens if somebody doesn't sign it?
What happens if they don't sign one of the other pledges?
We hold them out for the other stuff that are mandatory.
So is that, that's what I'm asking the board? Is that what we're saying on this? That it's a mandatory thing? If you don't sign it, you don't play?
Ms. Treese's motion, so, Michelle?
I personally think if, if the other ones have signed pledges for other things like that, this is a big deal. Uh, if you sign a pledge that said, "I promise not to smoke a cigarette," that affects you. But if you fail to wear your mask and you become COVID positive, that affects the team. That's a big deal to me. Because I have a son applying, so I think if, if you can have them sign a pledge that I will not drink drugs, they can sign this, a pledge that says, "I will be responsible for doing whatever they need to do to protect themselves, uh, against COVID and their team." It's not just, I, I, I think I hear a lot of folks talking about individual students and my child and, and this particular kid and siblings. I'm looking at the entire team, the entire team and staff. So I think signing that pledge is a big deal, and I think if they fall short of the pledge, whatever that consequence might be, should stand.
And, and Michelle, I agree with everything you just said, but it didn't answer my simple question. My simple question was, if they don't sign, do we hold them out from playing?
I believe she said yes.
I think you go by what the coaches do. I don't like the coach. I think, uh, Mr. Turner can tell you exactly what the answer to that is, but if they don't follow the pledge for one requirement, I promise not to do drugs, and there's a consequence, then I think that same consequence should stand.
I, I have a question. Most of the other forms that we have to fill out are either mandated by the state legislature or board policy. And so there's consequences for not filling out a, a drug consent form, there's consequences for not filling out a concussion or bu- or bullying, and all of those are things that play, I understand it, are mandated by either the board as policy or the state legislature.
I think if we approve the motion, it effectively becomes board policy.
That's what I was trying to get clarified. Is that part of the motion that they're held out if they don't sign it?
I say yes.
Okay, that's all I was after. Thank you.
Paul, are you the second on the motion? Do you agree with that being the?
Yes.
Okay. So any further discussion about the amendment to the amendment to the original motion? Okay, so the, as I understand it, the motion is that our, our student athletes will be required upon penalty of not being allowed to participate, to sign a form that acknowledges their obligations to, um, do everything necessary to protect themselves and their teammates and their coaches from COVID, to include wearing masks, social distancing.
To follow the T double S double A guidelines regarding COVID. I think, I think that would be the simplest.
I'm sure there's a document like that already out there somewhere that somebody's got.
So does everybody understand the motion?
Amendment.
Or, right, the amendment, the motion to amend? Okay, I think we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Cappy Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Treese?
Yes.
Ms. Paul Treese?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Timbaland?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was just a form.
That was the amendment to the amendment to the original motion. So now we've got an amendment to the original motion. The amendment to the original motion is to, um, include all fall sports, so that all fall sports would be contemplated by the original motion, which was to permit football and soccer to proceed, um, pursuant to the, the safety plan that's been put in place.
And my only comment for making the original motion is, I have no problem with this amendment. It's not technically necessary, but I realize people are confused on what sports we're talking about because even sometimes we accidentally say fall sports when we're really just talking about the contact ones. So that's, that's fine.
So just your little Robert's rules lessons? We vote on the amendments, and then we vote on the motion as it, as it was amended.
Okay, so any questions or comments about the amendment to the original motion?
Which is making it say all fall sports.
All fall sports.
All fall sports.
Correct. Okay, we'll do a roll call there.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Cappy Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Treese?
Yes.
Ms. Paul Treese?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Timbaland?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we are to the motion to, as amended, to, um, permit all fall sports to proceed, uh, pursuant to the safety plan, the T double S double A guidelines that have been put in place, while also requiring that our student athletes each sign, uh, an agreement or acknowledgement that they will abide by the T double S double A rules, uh, and the school policies regarding their participation in the sport related to COVID-19. Does everybody understand that motion? What additional comments or questions are there on the motion?
Before Mr. Turner sits down, it's glad to see him standing up and welcome. Where are you from? I know you're very glad to be here.
Yes, sir.
Glad you're here.
So, uh, this backs up a little bit, but it just hit me, we mentioned T double S double A, but we would apply these to even the non-T double S double A sports also. We're, we're just saying we're using, using their regulations, so swimming in the mountain bike team.
Yeah, we, I think anything we do at the school level for clubs or I may not even be in charge of, I think all these guidelines are a lie.
Okay.
And, and marching band, because marching band goes hand in hand with our Friday night football.
And Dr. Vermillion is, is by my office every day looking at different things as they change and trying to implement. Yeah, that's making a very good job as well.
So I do have some comments, but I don't want to cut off anybody else's comments. Been a lot of conversation about these sports being voluntary, and that's true. But the sports are school sanctioned. And by being school sanctioned, the inherent expectation by the families, uh, allowing their children to participate in them is that they are safe. Um, and while there's no question, our staff has done a fantastic job putting together our safety plan, uh, and going above and beyond the T double S double A rules, there's, there's, there's a fundamental flaw in the idea that by enacting those rules, it's safe. And that flaw is, there's no protection for these athletes when they are actually in contact with one another. They are, you know, sharing body fluids. You guys have worked the line, I was a lineman, I know what goes on in there. You're spitting on each other, you're sweating on each other, there's stuff going around. And there's no way to prevent that if the kids are playing like they're supposed to. Um, and so that's a fundamental, uh, shortcoming of a plan to protect students participating in contact sports when we have a pandemic going on. Um, and then there's also the, the aspect of the crowds. And a large crowd, and three thousand, thirty-five hundred people in our stadium is a large crowd. And folks, um, without us having some really serious security to enforce the rules, will not adhere strictly to the guidelines for protecting one another from, uh, potential spread of the virus. I think the last thing any of us would want is for our athletic program to become a hotspot or the source of a hotspot of an outbreak in the community. Um, we all know that I think there are at least five high school teams currently that are in quarantine because one or more of their players have, um, tested positive, and those are football teams. That doesn't include other sports that we're aware of, that their teams are also in quarantine. So children are, are contracting the virus, and they're being tested, and their teams are going into quarantine. Um, I think that by us proceeding to allow the contact sports, or I'll just say contact sports because the, the non-contacter is less concerned to me, that's an inconsistent position for us, given the fact that we're currently not allowing our students to be in a classroom, uh, and learning. When, when they're in the classroom, they're going to wear masks, they're going to have, uh, social distance, they're going to have dividers, they're going to have hand sanitizer and lots of other protections that won't be available to our athletes when they're on the field. Um, and I think that's very inconsistent. Um, while we have received a lot of emails this last week, probably more than I've ever received in my thirteen and a half years on this board, um, and while most of them were in favor of proceeding with the sports, there was a significant number that I received, and I don't know whether they were all sent to you all, that argued against us proceeding as well. So I don't want to leave the impression that, that we only received, uh, comments about, um, proceeding with the sports. Um, I also want to point out that, you know, the NCAA looks like they're not going to have the football season this year. There was reports from over the weekend that the five, whatever they call them, the five major conferences met, and they are likely going to come out with an announcement this week that each of them is going to cancel their football season or push it into the spring. That includes the SEC, the ACC, and lesser, uh, lesser conferences. So, um, that gives me great concern, and I'm, I'm, I'm under the understanding that Dr. Nolan even today said that he is, um, very skeptical that ETSU will even have a season this year of any of their fall sports. Um, so that puts us in, in an awkward position of, um, you know, there being, there being no collegiate sports being played, the collegiate, collegiate programs have far more resources and ability to ensure the safety of their players than we do, and yet they're planning on canceling their seasons or moving it into the spring. And finally, I want to bring us back to the numbers. The numbers are not everything, but our community is, is pretty much on fire with the COVID folks. There is significant spread of the virus within our community. Uh, last week when we were meeting and talking about this, I told you that our hospitals had ninety-five people who were currently hospitalized at that point. Since that time, this morning, we had a hundred and twenty-two people hospitalized with the virus. Seventeen of those people on ventilators, um, and we have pediatric patients who actually have the virus. And so, you know, it's, 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 while, while there is risk in everything, that's true. Um, I believe that we have an inconsistent position here if we approve proceeding with these sports, um, when we, when we compare that to the fact that our students aren't even in class, are they? And so for all of those reasons, I can't support the motion. It has nothing to do with the quality of the safety program that you guys have put in place, and guys, I want you guys to be on the field. I know how much you want to do that. But I just don't know that it's responsible of us to go ahead and do that at this point. So for that reason, I'll vote against the motion.
I'll make a call. I'll make just a technical point. Because we added that first amendment that I wasn't wild about, uh, that further complicates if this gets defeated, and I think we'll have to reconsider the non-contact ones a fall because now they're all lumped together, and we would be saying no to all of them, and I don't think that's really what we want to say.
And we can always do a, another.
Right, right, so keep that in, in mind, uh, if, if this does get defeated.
Sure. Other comments or questions?
There are several I can make. Part of what you said I agree with. We have a governing body, the T double S double A, who had an opportunity to do some of the things you said. They have decided not to do it. The NCAA, you know, for whatever reason, they may decide, they may not decide. So, again, uh, we've been put in the position of doing what, in my opinion, the T double S double A should have done. They haven't done it. So we're here tonight discussing and voting on what we're discussing and voting.
Other comments or questions? All right, we'll have a roll call on the motions. Everybody clear on the motion?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Burden?
Mr. Tom Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Cappy Hall?
Pass.
Mr. Donovan Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Michelle Treese?
Sidney? Yes.
Ms. Pollard Treese?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Timbaland?
No.
Ms. Cappy Hall?
With great reservation, and let these minutes reflect that I have big issues with crowd size, yes. Do your part.
Good luck this season. Consent agenda, is there a motion? Or is, are there anything that y'all would like to pull out, a motion to approve?
Our feelings won't be heard if y'all leave.
Yeah, y'all are welcome to leave. You're welcome to stay, too, though.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Do you have a motion? Is there a second? All the favor press is here. Okay, you have any new business? We're down to our information items. Y'all are welcome to leave, too. We'll take your masks off.
Good luck tomorrow.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you for everything.
I'll have an agenda, I'll have an agenda out the next couple of days, from Monday through into the weekend. I think we're ready up in Fort Worth.
Yeah. We don't vote on that anymore, so...
I'll tell them they'll look for a, a agenda. They're coming out in the next couple of days, a draft.
It seems that the agenda will come out in the next couple of days, a draft of the agenda, thank you.
So have there been any committee meetings since our last time together?
Yes, our last meeting was almost like an Alex committee meeting.